Okay, I see that that started. All right then, let's get going. We have the council, we have Polly, we have Jan. So I think we're ready to kick it off. This is a hideout Utah Town Council regular meeting, March 13th, 2025. Electronically versus Zoom as well as attendance in the town hall. For those who are there. Calling the meeting to order. I'm Phil Rubin, I am the mayor. And I'm going to do the role. Bob Nadelberg.
Here.
Ralph Severini.
Here.
Chris Byer.
Here.
Carol Hazelton.
Here.
Jonathan Gunn.
Right over here.
All right, we have a quorum, the entire council is here. Thank you. First item for the agenda tonight is the approval of the council minutes of February 13th, 2025. Counsel, any comments on that?
I did have one comment. It's not a correction, it's just that I signed in just to the special meeting. And I signed in a couple of minutes late, but it doesn't indicate that. I don't know if it should or not.
Yeah, do you, do you know what time you signed in to, let's see?
I think it was just three or four minutes after it started. I was having trouble with my computer.
Oh, after this, after the special meeting?
No, no, I attended almost the entire special meeting and it shows that I voted and everything, but
Okay.
Yeah, but maybe, maybe you should say that I just signed in late.
Oh, okay, because it does say council member Hazelton had not yet joined, but a quorum was established allowing the meeting to proceed. Do you want me to put?
She joined, she did join a bit later.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it should just reflect, maybe you can just tell from the video or whatever when she hopped on, just so that it acknowledges when she joined.
Okay, I'll, I'll add that in there. Yeah, I didn't watch the meeting, so I didn't know when you joined.
Yeah, it was pretty early.
Okay, I'll add that in before I publish them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments on the meeting?
Yeah, hey, this is Chris, Alicia. In the committee report outs for the post committee. You, in there, there are two trail names, one is Keatley. And the other one is Wada Way. It says Waterway.
Oh, whoops.
It's okay.
W A D A. Whiskey, alcohol. Fudge. Alpha. Perfect.
It's, it's two words, two words.
You should be an air traffic controller, Phil.
I got my cheat sheet up here, Bob, didn't look at it.
Thanks for, thanks for grabbing that, Chris, I appreciate it.
Okay. Other comments on the minutes? Okay. If there are no comments on the draft minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2025?
So moved with the corrections.
Well, I'll second that then.
Okay, Carol, how do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Bob?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Okay, Jonathan?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved. February 13th, 2025. Thank you, Alicia, for your efforts on that. Okay, next up is follow-up items. From that minutes list, were there anything on there that we need to talk about?
I caught about three or four things, Phil, so. The standard process, but you know, we've moved to a little bit of offline catching, so that's, I mean, this is going to be a very short meeting, it looks like, anyway, we don't have a lot of stuff, so I can quickly go through this, or I can send them to Alicia, because I think now we're trying to capture some of these follow-up items offline. But maybe we discuss the big ones, you know, as a group, so, does that make sense? Because that was.
Yeah, something you want to bring up, bring up.
Okay. Let's see, on. We, so there was on line 33 of page four of 10. There is a council acknowledged that private roads could work in highly exclusive communities. We plan on continuing that discussion. And, you know, are we going to calendar that? Do we need some additional information? What are, what are the factors that would bring this into, into scope for a follow-up?
Yeah, we're, we're going to, so we had it on the agenda for item one tonight, but due to conflicts, Jason Birmingham is not going to be here. But he is going to give us a discussion document. Prior to the next meeting, so we can all read and review, and then it'll come back in, in the April meeting.
Okay, that's great. And then on line 13 of page six of 10. There was the idea to do another survey as we're developing future plans. Sometimes I don't know if we're gonna, if it's over-serving or not. Because, because the Ross Creek survey was limited, so going forward, do we want to do a wider question survey that would include the scope of more things, because we have possibilities for annexations and other pieces that may come up, so. How do you, you know, does anyone else, have any thoughts on doing an additional survey at a strategic time here within, within this year?
Yeah, hey Ralph, I, I do. I think it's important that we understand what our residents want for, you know, the future. I mean, that's, I think, our primary obligation to fulfill. And then I think about the annexation area in Richardson Flat and how that, whatever ends up. However, that ends up being developed, it's going to serve not just hideout, but a greater area than that. And it's closely connected with Summit County Park City. Really close, yeah, we, we know exactly how it's situated, even though it's on the, will be on the extreme western end of hideout. So I do think that we should think about and try to execute a survey, not just, you know, for, to help us with updating our general plan and et cetera, but I, I do think we need to kind of get a wider, wider reach with our, our surveys, at least if we're contemplating some pretty major changes that would be impacting the region.
Yeah, I agree. I was just going to say to that point, because I think that's why I kind of brought it up, was we have all these, we have some new intervening and changes, you know, even with the annexation, there might be some opportunities to do some different things, so given all that, sounds like a good time to resurvey.
If we do that.
I'd want to be part of that survey design if possible, right? I mean, whoever, whoever's designing the survey, and I don't know if that's you, or we're hiring a consultant, or what are we doing, but I would like to be part of that, only be, you know, as a council member, but also as a resident and a key stakeholder for, you know, what are, we're, we're all trying to do the best we can here. And if we're looking for public input. There are various ways to do that, and sometimes it's how you ask the question that really matters, or you know, what you're, it, it's really how you ask the question, and then what, how you can slice and dice the data to, you know, really get meaning out of the survey. So if there's a way for us to make sure we're issuing a good survey that's going to give us the results we're looking for, that, that would be my hope.
If we go beyond the scope of just hideout residents, I would suggest that we make sure the study is conducted in a way that we can segregate the responses from hideout residents and non-hideout residents, because I think we are primarily, our duties are primarily the hideout residents as opposed to the greater area. Not that I'm discounting those, but I think we need to make sure we understand what the hideout residents want and therefore need to segregate that data. Or those responses, I should say.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Jonathan. Great, great observation, great suggestion.
I, I, sorry guys, I don't think we should be combining the surveys in any way, shape, or manner. I think it just causes too much confusion. If you want to do two surveys, do two surveys.
Well, is anyone proposing two surveys? I'm not quite sure.
I'm just saying, Ralph, if, if you're going to do inside the town and outside the town, I would separate them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we did use questions like, you know, are you a full-time resident? Do you live in town? Do you own a home? That's some separation, but we need the, we need our townspeople to answer the questions. Clearly, that's, would be number one. And whether other people, you know, answer, and fulfill, fill out the survey. I'm not sure even how we, we distribute it to folks outside the town to get a reasonable input, you know?
I think that's something L H M can help us with if we get to, when we get to that point. Sorry, Chris.
Just going back to my original thought, which, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, but anyway, my original thought is we have to design this properly, we have to know what we're trying to get out of it, we have to understand if it's going to be a survey we're going to conduct multiple times, or is it something we're just going to do once to look for specific answers to, for specific problems, or what is a purpose? So I, I, I think I'm going to be asking Alicia to show me the existing survey data that we have from Survey Monkey to, to see what we've collected so far to date. So at least we have kind of an understanding of, of that. Ralph, unless you've got some kind of presentation on that already that I could look at, where I don't have to look at the raw data?
Yeah, actually, Chris, I've got, well, we've got, we've compiled a lot of this, but, and I keep separate folders on my laptop, just to, you know, to separate that, because it can get confusing. You're asking different questions, but I agree, I think we need to sit down, understand what, what our aims for, what our aims are for the survey. And, and clearly, you know, ask, ask some questions, are we going to have a follow-up? You know, those kinds of things. You can even have a follow-up inside the question, depending on how your answer is set. So, you know, there's lots of surveys like that. We need, you know, at, at this point, we've been doing it a little bit ad hoc. You know, and, and I would say maybe we get down to a little bit more scientific approach. You know, I'd love to, you know, I, we, we, we employ Qualtrics, meaning Amazon employs Qualtrics, which is right here in Utah. I mean, they're inexpensive, they're a big, big company, but I'd love to talk to those guys just to see from, you know, what they're doing from a, a survey type, you know, maybe we can get some overall input as to, it may be free as well, so.
Who, who knows, Ralph, we did talk to someone who lives in town who was representing to us a Qualtrics solution. And that was last year, and we decided it was way too expensive for us to license for being such a small town, but if, if you've got some experts you know who can give us a little assistance that can only help.
Yeah, I mean, I always try to get things for, for free, or some free advice where I can, so to speak, so this wouldn't be anything different than that. And you're right, Chris, I was with you on, you know, on the Qualtrics, that it was a little bit overpriced, I mean, company, you know, they sell to Amazon, you know, it's like with 1,500,000 employees, you know, we're lucky if we get, you know, we're a small town, so, but, you know, we can learn from the big guys and see how we can carry, you know, incorporate some of those best practices and principles in terms of, you know, what we're trying to do. So that's one avenue. There's probably some consultants out there that we might want to pick their brain on, because I agree, I think we need to have a long-term view of this. We need to think about, maybe even informing people, expect, you know, every, every six months at around this time, you'll receive a survey. So there'll be, you know, towns, residents will be expecting something coming out, either in a newsletter or through an email as to, you know, the next survey, and what is, you know, what is going to, you know, what it's going to touch upon. So we can get better at this.
Let me, let me jump in here for a second. So it sounds like we do want to do a survey. We want to, we have some specific purposes that we're working on. I think we ought to have a little subgroup look at that. We're already talking about a survey, which we have to do for our general plan update. That was one of the things we wanted to do. We have a survey that we did for the Ross Creek entrance, if that's not sufficient. We, you have, we have to decide if that, the input we got is sufficient or not. And then we're talking about potentially reaching out beyond the borders of hideout. So I, I think we need to get a small group together to work on this and figure out what the, what the, the number of surveys and what the purposes of, of those surveys, and then we can start to engage people to help us design a survey.
Should, who should take that, Mayor? I know I'm with on that small steering committee for general plan, should, should we take that as a action?
I would, I would, I was going to start there, Chris, that I mean, that's the first, that's the overarching piece, so let's get that figured out first. We're early in the annexation stuff, we have time to get something done for that when the time comes, so.
Okay.
But let's start with it.
We'll take that as an action. Ralph, bring it, we'll bring you in on it.
Yeah, because I think this is longer term than just looking at the general plan. We want to have, if we're going to map this out and do it well, we're going to have a longer-term plan. And, and maybe a, understanding, if we ask these questions, how does, you know, in, in general, how will it impact potentially any future surveys and vice versa? So, you know, where are we going with this? So bigger picture, yeah, I'm glad to, since I've been involved in just about every survey so far, I've got some data, we can share it, and we can figure out where to go from here.
Okay, thanks. We'll, we'll invite you as a guest, Ralph, next time the steering committee gets together, which I, I think should be pretty soon.
Okay.
Yeah, Phil, I, I think that was, those were the big two. I'll leave it at that. If I surface anything else later, I will.
All right, thank you, Ralph.
In, in the interest of time, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anybody else from council have a follow-up item they want to bring up here before I move on to public input? All right. Then let's move to item five of public input. The floor is open to any intended to speak on items not listed on the agenda. The way you do that is you use your raise your hand functionality on, on Zoom. It's in your toolbar where it turn, where you turn on your microphone and those kinds of things. You can do a raise your hand. All right, I see a hand up from Damian, so. Damian, whoop, sorry, I'm trying to.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I had spent a little bit, and I haven't been paying attention, I apologize to the, the meetings, and it came to our attention about the Elkhorn Springs project in the Old Sausman property. And so I guess I was hoping to get maybe an update, and then I had a specific question about the commercial. So did, did it get recommended to approval from the planning commission to go to town council, or are they still working on it?
They're still working on it, it hasn't come out of the planning commission yet, Damian, so the council isn't up to date on where they are and what they're recommending, so it's still being processed according to Chairman Mattisek, that will be discussed next week at the, at the planning commission meeting.
Sounds good, I would definitely log into that. And then I guess the one that everyone's questioning is I'm, I'm assuming that you guys have discussed, hopefully, the three commercial properties to be dedicated to the town? And so I guess the question I have is, it's very irregular, and what is the intent of those?
It hasn't come to us, it hasn't come to us, Damian.
Okay, so you haven't, you haven't had any discussions about that at all?
The council with a recommendation around that, there's discussion, I understand, there's discussion in the planning commission around those commercial properties and how best to ensure that they're being managed properly, so that'll be again covered on the, the next Thursday, Thursday's meeting.
Okay, sounds good. I just figured that it was part of the M D A that you guys were looking at internally, but that's not come to the council, I understand.
Now, I talked with, I said, I talked with Chairman Mattisek today to be sure I understood the situation.
Sounds good, thank you very much, I will.
Damian, Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in for a second, we, we have been in discussions with Elkhorn Springs. They may, they may pull their application from next week's meeting and go to the following months, but it's not yet determined, but very likely.
Okay, well, we hadn't heard that, I hadn't.
Conversation today, they're, they're still working on putting some materials together, so we'll see if indeed that's the case, but just prepare for that, Damian, it could end up being at the April Planning Commission meeting.
I appreciate that, and I know that we're a small, but fighting to be a bigger town, and the notifications of projects, unless you're paying attention to all the agenda items and diligently, I know a lot of them come. We get Carol's newsletter, and I guess, would it be possible to put anything on the newsletter of upcoming projects coming, I mean, is that an improper thing to do, or is there any way just to send it to the same email group that a project is coming to planning commission? Is that a possibility?
We, it's, you know, we publish in advance the agendas for the meetings, they're available on the public notice website, the dates are constant. And you can get on a mailing list from the public notice website to get any updates from the, from those public notices, so.
Is that a physical mailing, or is that electronic mailing?
Electronic mailing.
Okay. And who, how do I do that?
You can sign up with your email address, and every time there's something posted there from the town, you get, you get a ding in your inbox.
And that's on the website to do that?
Yeah, it's on the public notice website. If you have questions on how to do that, you can reach out to Alicia, and she can guide you through it.
Thank you very much, I won't take any more time, thank you.
You, you can also just Google it, I literally just Googled it, and it came right up. Utah.
Public notice website?
Utah Public Notice Website.
Yeah, that you can get to it, Chris, but if you want to get on the email distribution of it, there's a sign up.
Right, you go to that site, you subscribe, you figure out which body you are interested in, or which bodies, you subscribe to notifications, you sign up for it, and then they send you notifications, it's, it works very well.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, other questions from the public, again, the raise your hand functionality. Not seeing any more hands coming up. All right, so with that, I'm going to close public input. And we'll move on to the agenda items. So agenda item one is being deferred. Our presenter, as I mentioned earlier, has a conflict, is not available tonight. So that'll be pushed to the April meeting, and as I mentioned, the council will get a prep package. Item two, we have the, the fire, Mossage Fire Team here with us tonight. So we're excited to have them here and talk to us a bit about wildfire mitigation, current processes, next steps. So I don't know who's up, Chief Troy. Clint, who's, who gets to do this?
I think it's me today, Mr. Mayor, Troy. Appreciate your time, members of the council, we appreciate your time as well to come and discuss wildfire mitigation again. I think we were going to start with a short video. Look at, you know, typical effects of, of a wildfire in an urban interface area, so we can just start with that video, and then we can talk about our next steps and kind of what we're working on as a district with the town and the master HOA on some implementation of some fuel mitigation projects.
Okay, let me get that video up, I've got it here on.
Hey, by the way, guys, thanks for showing up in person. If I knew you were going to be there in person, I would have come down to town hall. Wasn't sure about the, if anybody was going to show up, given the weather, but you guys are, you guys are tough, you know? You know, kudos for making it to town hall on a snowy evening, you know? I owe you one on that, guys.
Yes, thank you.
So this is, this goes, this, this, this is the video, you all seeing the, kind of a blurred screen here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so. So Troy, I don't know if you want me to introduce it or just kick it off?
So this was a fire, I don't remember what the year was, but it was in a community outside of Reno, Nevada. Typical summer day. Gentleman at the bottom of the hill was burning some weeds, got out of his control, ran up the hill, and what you're looking at here is the effects of a little fire turning into massive fire, I think within nine minutes, it burned down six structures.
Can you open that window up entirely, Alicia?
I can, Ralph, but you're going to lose resolution.
All right, well, it's good resolution now.
This is, this is old school videotape type stuff, so. It's not, it's not high-def, I can certainly go full screen, but.
Yeah, some of us who wear glasses, Phil.
It's not going to be pretty.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, Troy, if you could take a moment and explain, you know, how this, how and why this fire traveled so quickly uphill? And, and whether or not the conditions are similar to what we have here in hideout, that would be great.
Yeah, so as you can see, it's not real dense vegetation. You're looking at some grass components, some brush components, and a little bit of bigger vegetation that is between all of the structures. The fire's definitely moving uphill, as you can look at the smoke column, I mean, it's got a little bit of wind to it, but it's not extremely windy. Fire does tend to burn uphill faster than it goes downhill, so topography does play a, a part in the fire spread. But the biggest thing we want to point out is the separation between structures, because once the fire reaches that first structure, it's just a continuous fuel from structure to structure to structure with the vegetation that sits in between each, each individual home. That's kind of where we're coming at with that, when we're talking about minimum vegetation separation and the things that we can do, because what we don't want to have happen in an urban interface fire, is we don't want the structures to become part of the problem, we want to be able to keep the fire away from the structure, from, away from the structure to create a structure fire, but we also want to make sure that if we have a structure fire, it's not burning down the neighbor's house, or is, you know, starting another wildfire.
Sorry, I didn't mean to stop that, I meant to try and change the size.
It was actually coming in pretty clear after a while.
So on that video, it's, like I said, it's outside of Reno, Nevada, which is, you know, a municipality, a lot of pulled-in firefighters. I believe if the sound was up, you could hear the first sirens coming in nine minutes into the video, which is a fairly quick response. You're probably 10, 11 minutes before you actually see somebody spraying water. But at that point, I believe there's three or four structures that are impacted severely from the fire. But at that point, I believe there's three or four structures that are impacted severely from the fire.
Well, there's no doubt that fire is scary stuff and.
And and we don't have to watch the whole video. Um, it's just, it just, it's a good representation on how fast things can go bad in the urban interface. When when you don't have that separation of vegetation, you know, within the structures. So.
And it looks like it it looks like the fire is running uphill. I just was really kind of noticing because this is the second or third time I've watched it. It's kind of developing two paths. Is that or multiple paths? Is that typical?
Yeah, it's just what the fire is doing is just finding the vegetation and, you know, feeding itself off of that. Uh, the reason why fire burns so much better uphill is because it's preheating and drying out the vegetation above it with that convective heat. So things are already super dried out by the time the actual flame impingement hits it. As well as the embers that are traveling up the hill from the vegetation that's starting, you know, fires ahead of itself. That makes sense.
So yeah, based on the timestamp, that's five minutes in from when you first saw it starting and it's already. Jumped twice, so doesn't take long to create.
Be the guy that started it, who's trying to put it out. Stay in his home.
Troy, would you say that the the terrain depicted in the video and the vegetation is pretty similar to what we have here in hideout?
Yes, very much so.
And one of the things you brought up in the meeting, you know, when you when you first showed this to when we had kind of the HLA meeting. There was, you brought up the um, the fact that certain shrubs um kind of emit a. Almost like an oily substance that's also that also can be highly flammable. So I don't, yeah. You're just. Sorry?
The scrub oak within the town, uh, it it likes to burn. So when it starts to burn, it does, it releases a waxy substance. It almost uh reacts like uh fuel, like gasoline. So it it fuels itself to burn. That makes sense. Uh, the vegetation in that video is it's, you know, same type of vegetation you guys have here. You're on a south facing aspect. Most of the town is. You've got a lot of cheat grass. Uh, sagebrush component, oak brush, and then an abundance amount of structure. So our our biggest concern is if we get a fire that starts down by the lake. And starts burning up towards the highway or if we get a fire that starts on two forty eight. And starts working its way up that south facing aspect. Um, in the in all those newer communities on the other side of two forty eight.
Because once we start a fire, all the fire needs is fuel. I mean, we'll, we come to the wildland season, we're gonna have the heat and oxygen available. All we need is a little spark like you saw the guy that accidentally started it at the bottom. But once it comes from the little cheat grass into the sagebrush into the bigger trees, all the home is is a fuel load. So that's why we are really excited that you'd adopted the wildland urban interface code is. We just need a separation from the home to the vegetation to lessen the potential of the home being part of the fuel load. Because we get convective heat that really starts most of the fires or spot fires, but we can also get embers coming off. A home fire, once a structure fire starts. It put it puts out some and produces a significant amount of embers that then further exacerbates that fire spread.
Could you talk for a moment about our level of risk and then maybe perhaps segue into the kinds of things that. You know, the low hanging fruit and then maybe transition up the up the uh up the scale?
Hey, um, also another thing is um, before you go into that detail. You already mentioned the wooey, the wildland urban interface code, uh Troy. That was you speaking, right Troy?
Yes.
Okay, and this is Chris. Um. Is our code adequate as we as it's written now? Is there something we need to do? As a town to make a code change?
So the urban interface code is a minimum uh standard pretty much. And when you guys, when the town adopted the code, it was great. Don't get me wrong, like. That was huge for wildfire mitigation. Uh, there are other steps that go beyond code that I think could help the town. In becoming more fire safe community, uh, and that's some of the things that we're trying to roll out as a fire district. Uh, with different communities within the county itself. Uh, a lot of that is becoming a firewise community. Some of the things with firewise, we would like to see go above and beyond what the code requires. The code requires no tree crowns within ten feet of a structure. You have to have that minimum of ten foot separation between the vegetation and the home. Uh, when we start talking about firewise and other things that we can do, we we use a term called home hardening. That takes it one step further to where there's no combustible vegetation within five feet of that structure. So when we're talking fire, we want to keep fire on the ground, low intensity. Uh, we want to make sure that it runs out of that fuel source before it gets to a home. Uh, studies show that a lot of times when a fire comes through a community. The direct flame impingement is not what's burning homes down. It's the embers that get trapped in little areas like wood piles underneath decks, in patio furniture, in the eaves, rain gutters of a structure. Uh, sitting smolderer, smolderer, then the wind picks up. Fire department's gone down the road, checking on other structures, come back and now that house is on fire. That's where that five foot of non combustible material. Uh, away from the structure would help when it comes to those ember traps or what we call them. Um, just eliminating that potential hazard or a smoldering effort.
Does that include like bark and mulch and kind of wood products?
Yes, so bark, bark's nice, but all you're doing is rearranging the fuel source at that point. You're taking a tree that's ten feet tall, chipping it down. Now you're taking that tree that may have been. Twenty feet away from your home and now you're just rearranging the fuel and putting it right next to the home. So we recommend uh bare mineral, bare mineral soil or rock or cement, something that's not going to burn.
Like Troy said, we, the wildland urban interface code is a very effective code in lessening the likelihood of a loss of a structure. What we want to see is kind of a partnership with the fire district and the town and the HOAs to kind of go above and beyond to make the. The homes and the community as a whole a little bit safer by implementing these firewise landscaping and assisting with the maintenance of the defensible space. Because when we go through and we do the inspection and verify that the tree is ten foot away from the home. Trees grow, vegetation grows, so what's compliant today and what's compliant in five years is a drastically different thing. So just having a partnership and teaming up to be able to maintain that vegetation. Because if we have a wildfire that starts a building on fire, not only is it threat to that building and the adjoining structure, but the community as a whole. So kind of stepping up and trying to do a little bit more to protect the community at large.
Okay, so from. I'm glad you mentioned the uh HOA because we we have some HOA. Landscape requirements that push us the wrong way. And so I think part of the challenge is getting, as you said, the partnership between the HOAs. Um, and the town to figure out how we do this additionally. Um, the reduction of uh of combustibles is reduces the demand on water, which is another good thing. Because um, if we could zero scape, we would certainly uh be consuming less water than what we're doing through irrigation. So I like the idea of maybe getting a team together, committee together. To kind of work on this offline with some, you know, updates once a quarter or something as we think about. Where we are with the HOAs, how do we address their concerns? Because they're, you know, they want to maintain appearance and keep property values. And we certainly don't all want concrete pads around our house, but we have to find some happy medium here.
And that's the intent of what we'd like to do is to meet with the town council and the master HOA and kind of make sure everybody's in line. Because like we talked about, we we live in the area for a particular reason. So we want to maintain that, but still have a level of, we call it self-defense of the home. Because the intent of the wildland code and the firewise is if a fire breaks out on my neighbor's property and starts moving towards my house. Well before the fire department arrives, it increases the likelihood that water doesn't need to be put on the ground to put it out. That the fire can pass by because I have that buffer zone between my home that's a very dense fuel source and the vegetation. And limits the possibility of combustion.
Could you talk about the the risk spectrum and where hideout falls on that risk spectrum?
I believe hideout falls in the high risk area.
Yep.
Actually, the reports that we 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 drew, guys, was severe. Um, so we were a little bit more above the uh the spectrum of, you know, just average. We were in the severe to high category.
We're 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 orange for sure, teetering on red.
How do we fit in with the rest of the region? Are we worse than Summit Park?
Well, I can tell you this, Chris. We did, I pulled four zip codes. Um, and um ran reports on four zip codes through these analytic analytical engines. Um, two are in Park City, one of the two in Park City. Um, is is severe. And I I think that's the area, you know, over by um closer to Parley's Canyon in that section of the woods in that in that zip area. No surprise. Um, the other two zips were uh obviously ours. I also ran Heber, which came in slightly lower than ours. And I also ran, I ran Oakley, which came in um severe, so uh and if you look at what. The survey that Park City took, you know, Park Cityites are saying, hey, this is their most severe problem. This comes up as number one. There they have one of two zip codes that are severe like ours. So it's a mixed bag, but I didn't see anything that was low. There wasn't anything below the middle spectrum. They were all above the fifty to ninety percent spectrum with us at the higher end. And the, I think it was the eight four oh nine eight zip code that came in um considerably higher.
Right, right. Summit Park, um, Heinbrook, right, so uh, so um. Alright, I just want to make sure that we're not going to have another. News report that hideout is like the worst risk for fire of of any place around or an implication of that. We're hot, we're high, we have fire, we already know wildfire is our number one. Uh, threat. So, uh, but we're not alone in that. In in that uh risk area. It it is. Common in this area that we live in, that we're, many communities, including hideout are. Um, have a run a high fire, a wildfire risk, so.
You are absolutely right. You are not the the only place within our county that. Uh, is in the high risk. There's there's actually areas within the county that are at a higher risk than than what hideout is.
Your wildfire risk runs commensurate to the size of the vegetation and like as as simple as we can make it. The bigger the tree or the bigger the bush, whether you go from cheat grass to sagebrush to oak brush to a very large pine tree. The hazard runs commensurate to that, so it all just depends on kind of a lot specific, but. Hideout does have a lot of hazard just with the area that it's in. With the south facing slope being by a highway, being by a state park, so there's hazard, but.
Windy power lines, we know, right? We know, and lightning, so um, so uh can we separate out, if if you would? What we as a town can do to continue to evolve? And help the community through what the town can do to. You know, let at least reduce our risk in some way and then separate out what. We have to rely on property owners or HOAs, you know, anybody who is. Has an authority or ability to actually make changes on a property. What can the town do versus property owners, HOAs?
Uh, the town could realistically look at ordinances um that could manage some of that fuel loading on specific lots. Um. Like I say, you can't go under what code requires, but as a town, you could adopt an ordinance that becomes more restrictive. Than what the minimum requirements for that code are.
Okay, the wooey i- is as you've characterized is the minimum. That's a good starting point. At least we adopted that. But we could do better by taking a look at it, maybe becoming more restrictive. Um, in in some of the code language. And so that would be your recommendation? Would that be your recommendation for what the town can do, you know, from a town perspective?
The town and the HOAs would be to strive to become a firewise community. And that is the home hardening that Troy's talked about and also that five foot defensible space. Because we are held to requiring code minimum. But be a little more, actually significantly more fire safe and firewise would be adopting that firewise at a community level and an HOA level. Saying this is what we want to do as a community and work towards that. And what can the HOAs and the fire district do to work hand in hand to limit and hopefully eliminate. A large loss or a catastrophic fire in the area.
Can we at some point get a presentation on what it means to be a firewise community? I know you mentioned the five foot. No combustible vegetation within five feet. Is that all there is or i- is there education? Is there?
There's education, community outreach, uh, fire prevention days. There's there's multiple things that go into it. It's coming up with a uh fire. Mitigation plan, uh, implementing that plan. Uh, yeah, it it's quite, there's quite a few different details in becoming a firewise community, but. Absolutely, if you want, it's it's the NFPA Firewise Program. Um, it's it's online, it's easy to look at, but absolutely, we would love to come and do a presentation. Uh, with the the town council and whoever wants to attend and kind of look at what that program, what the benefits are and how that. How that can roll out within hideout.
That would be fantastic. I I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, one thing we're gonna do as, you know, at the end of the presentation is propose a committee structure. To keep this in front of us, so to speak. The, there's an application for that. This is just part of what we can do as a town. Um, and then the other pieces would be what can we legislate in the future for future developers? Because it's always, it's gonna always be difficult for existing homes and homeowners to do, you know. To do as much as we want, but we certainly want to, you know, create a structure where developers will participate in. Future planning and developments with us. And I've already got some commitment from um at least one of the developers, our biggest developer. Um, we're gonna, Jonathan and I are having lunch with him, I think, next week. Jonathan, isn't that correct?
Tuesday.
Tuesdays, yeah, Tuesday. So the the um, so there's the piece here that, you know, Wasatch Fire Department's gonna help with. What the town has to do, what we can do to nego- negotiate and convince other parties that are. That are part of our town in developing our homes and our uh, you know, multifamily units. In a way that uh will reduce our fire exposure. And there's a whole education process as well, so, you know. Troy and Eric and Clint have already agreed to participate with us in May, maybe to have that townwise. Um, set of presentations, oh, kind of call it the open house. And then the other thing, um, guys, uh, that is. Uh, you'll be doing an assessment for the town. Doesn't that factor into the um firewise program as well as to form a baseline? Um, of your view of where we are. Um, just can you fill us in on that?
So um, we we talked about a couple of different things, so we're always available if uh individual homeowners would like a uh lot assessment. Um, kind of talked about how um, what what they can do to protect them, protect their home in the event of a wildfire. And mitigating things. Uh, we also had talked about just maybe driving through the town and looking at some hazard areas. Obviously, we're not gonna go on private property. Obviously, we're not going to go on private property without permission. But, you know, doing that drive-by, look at different areas within the the town on some of the concerns that uh, we see and hopefully get them addressed uh, through our our meetings that we were talking about.
Because the biggest thing about this whole push to be a firewise community, the biggest thing is an educational portion, is explaining the hazard because ignorance is bliss. I mean, we all like trees, we live in the mountains, but just having everybody understand what the hazard is in relation to the vegetation and the proximity to the home. That's something that we do offer and have offered for the last couple of years would be a home hazard assessment that a member of the fire district can come to each lot, each home, and perform that educational portion of why the five foot's important, why the ten foot's important, and kind of how to mitigate and limit the hazard on their own lot and do that townwide.
How does a homeowner or, you know, property owner engage you for the home hazard assessment?
Uh, the best way would just call our office and set up the time uh, with one of the inspectors or or one of the fire personnel to come out to do an assessment on their property.
When you say call our office, do we, uh, you know, Google Wasatch County Fire District? What do we do to find your number?
Yeah, I I I can give it to you right now.
Okay, and then we can put it in the record for the minutes.
It's four three five nine four zero nine six three six.
Thank you.
So to that point, is there a efficient, more efficient mechanism for your time? So you're not, you know, uh, doing one at a time? Or do you just accumulate enough requests and then figure out that, oh, I have enough requests and I'll go over to hideout and hit these ten homes? I mean, could we work together to make this more efficient for you and more efficient for our homeowners in town?
Yeah, I mean, we we can schedule community days and make ourselves available uh, for people on a Saturday, if that works better. A lot of the times what I've found is one time that works for one doesn't work for another. So with those folks, it's just easier for them to call and schedule an appointment and then we make ourselves available when they're available. The thing is, we want the property owner to be on site with us because like uh, Chief Nearing said, we want to implement that educational piece. So it it's not really beneficial for somebody if I walk around their property and just send them a report. We want to talk and discuss why um, that's a hazard on their property.
Yeah.
We want to be more out of winter months into the springtime so we can see the vegetation and explain it. Obviously, it's a little more problematic at this point. But come springtime in April-ish, we can start to roll that out. But we'll work on putting a link on our website to make it a little more easy to access. And then if we have, if we can do it per HOA, it's going to be a lot more efficient with our time so we can kind of schedule out a time. If we have an HOA that has a significant desire for it, reach out to the offices or me or Troy and we can set up a half a day or a full day somewhere, Monday through Friday, or if we get a big enough one, we can try to work to have a a Saturday event to really come through and do the community or an HOA as a whole.
Yeah, as you know, we informally reached out to the HOAs that attended the first meeting. Um, several of them attended, but we probably can get a little bit more prescriptive around, um, you know, around how we organize that. So um, that's on, that's on us with you guys, you know.
So we we've been picking up anecdotal reports of some uncomfortable or concerning insurance situations. In in my subdivision, which is Deer Waters, uh, our, in order to keep our existing insurance, um, the HOA had to accept a doubling of our deductible at a much higher rate. And I know Ralph, you've uh, you faced something even even more severe.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, we all shared this at that meeting. Um, and but, you know, in terms of o- other folks on, you know, on the council, we had a six X, six X increase. Um, you know, and a cancellation, we had to go out. So we actually formed a committee, um, an insurance committee for the Rustler area at least um, to understand, you know, and and build an approach to this. Part of that approach is interdependent upon what we're doing, you know, at the HOA level. And, you know, the good practices we're going to be bringing in from, you know, the fire district, what we're listening to right now. Um, and that may still not push back on the increase in insurance. Uh, and again, that's going to be dependent upon the HOA, the individual homeowner. It's not like we're trying to get in the way of that piece because that's all separate negotiation. But we certainly want to have all the best information and all the best practices promoted about hideout to any underwriters from uh, the carriers that we're going to be underwriting the risks here. And as you heard from Kyle Bluman, you know, he he got he got canceled here. Um, and it took him about several months. I I don't want to laugh at that because it was a funny story that he's shared with us, you know, he just couldn't get insurance. And um, you know, no matter what he seemed to be doing. So uh, we all may run into very separate issues, but we need to organize around that.
And just let let me be clear that, um, you know, the municipality has a role here in in helping the community understand the things that we can do as a community or as individuals and HOAs to do it. But we cannot, we cannot prescribe to the HOA, we cannot prescribe to the homeowner. Um, you know, how to manage your insurance claims, right? So just let's be clear that 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 there are, that there are responsibilities for fire risk mitigation belong to more than the town. The town doesn't, you know, the town, except for the the small amount of property that we own, doesn't have property. All the property belongs to individuals or HOAs.
Yeah, and the town, the town cannot um, negotiate insurance for anyone. However, at least um, share what the Wasatch Fire Department um, can provide in terms of, so to speak, ammunition for individual homeowners or HOAs to improve their ability to negotiate good rates or accessibility, because you guys do some things. And I I don't think that was, you know, it was shared previously, but if you can comment on that, I think that would be a good thing here.
And that's part of the home hazard assessment, that if homeowners A is doing everything that they can to mitigate it, the five-foot, the home hardening, the ten-foot, the maintenance through the HOA, and though if a homeowner or community is doing everything that they can to be firewise, we don't want that to go unnoticed. So we have a an assessment sheet that kind of ranks the hazard of each home, that if a homeowner is doing everything that they can, where do you want to provide our name and our letter behind it to provide to insurance companies? In all honesty, whether they accept that or not is entirely up to them, but the first goal is to make your home as fire-safe as possible. And the second would be to be able to get or maintain or reduce insurance rates. Us providing that letter is just a little bit of ammunition. Whether they're at goes anywhere with individual insurance agency is entirely up to them, but we do want to provide that so that you do get credit for doing what you can, you're safe, and we want to recognize those extra steps in the mitigation efforts.
Yes, would love to see a copy of that letter because I never got to to that depth. Um, and uh, you're right. I mean, an underwriter, a carrier does not have to um, take into account that, depends on the underwriter. But it certainly can't hurt, you know, it's going to be one more piece of evidence that you're, we're moving in the right or that homeowner is moving in the right direction.
Yep, number one, your home is safer. And number two, it potentially could help with insurance, potentially.
And and I I'd encourage every every homeowner to reach out to their individual HOA and ask them what what they're going to do to help mitigate these risks. What are they going to do with the landscape? What are they going to do with the mulch? What are they going to do about trees and so on and so forth? Um, because the more the HOA managers hear about this, I think the more likely they are to take action. And as the mayor pointed out, the towns, you know, we can, we can change an ordinance so that going forward, things change. But we already have eight hundred-some houses, which already, you know, uh, are in the hands of the HOA or the developer. And they're the ones that have the the final say for a lot of this.
So again, so Ralph, I mean, let's, let's, let's figure out how we're going to move this forward. Um, if we can. Because we're not going to solve it tonight. I think there's a lot of good discussion here. I also, before we get into that, I would like to comment to make sure everybody knows that the the municipality, working with the fire district, provides a report every year on the things that the municipality has done to help mitigate fire. And that goes to to Troy and the team. Uh, we and we talk about roads we've cut in, additional fire hydrants, adoption of code like wooie. Um, the uh, the uh, placement of the the fire station, the new fire station, all those things are uh, things that the municipality has contributes each and every year uh, to help the fire district, uh, help us figure out what else we should be doing. So we're, we're, you know, we're not, uh, we we've been doing this for quite a few years now. Um, and, you know, and we get credit for that, which is great. Uh, obviously, there's always, there's always more you can do. Um, but, you know, we, the the town does track and and report on the uh, the improvements we've made to help the the fire fire district deal with fire breaks and response and all the rest of that.
So, so um, let me just interject here because I know we're, you know, obviously, these gentlemen want to, we're going to head out at some point. Um, at, you know, at this point, I'd just like to propose that we kind of formalize this. We can have a committee structure because there's going to be a lot of ongoing um, educational items, scheduling. Uh, areas that the town can further cooperate to develop a strategy to get more firewise and to implement best practices. Uh, and also potentially to work with our developers coming in so we can get ahead of the game. And also to develop a a, you know, a strategy that's going to give us the best press in the in in the news, so to speak, going forward, because this is such a hot item, so to speak, in in, you know, in the press across the country. Uh, that I'd say, you know, let us get ahead of the game and kind of formalize this with a um, kind of a, call it a committee structure, commission structure, whatever you want, Bill. But um, I'd say Jonathan and I have both agreed since we've been working on this, that we would kick this off um, for as long as we need to kick it off and come back um, with all the things we can do in conjunction with a, you know, Wasatch Fire Department and these gentlemen who've been just terrific so far.
I think that's great. Ralph, I appreciate that you and Jonathan want to take the lead on this. We'd be glad to let you put some some goals together and and let's push it forward.
Yeah, thanks. And 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 most of all, thank you guys from the Wasatch Fire Department because I have learned a lot. Um, and maybe I'm more of the business insurance expert or at least knowledgeable person. And uh, you bring in so much to the equation. And I think working together, you know, we can um, further improve our fire protection as well as improve our ability from every homeowner to get better, you know, get more accessible insurance, not be canceled potentially, and, you know, hopefully have some decent rates. Um, right now, we're in, I think we're in a bad timeframe because the industry, the insurance industry at least has um, really reduced capacity. And this is coming from California through Nevada to Utah. And uh, finally to, you know, like Colorado, these are the states, biggest states at risk, and we're right in the middle of it. So um, it's good, let's, let's kind of get ahead of this than, rather than staying behind it.
Thank you.
That's my last comment, Phil.
I I know there's some hands up. Um, I'm, I don't want to spend another thirty minutes uh, asking questions in in the in the town council meeting on this tonight. I apologize to those of you who have questions. Um, again, the fire district is available uh, as they've mentioned, to help answer questions. Um, Ralph's going to put a commit, Ralph and Jonathan are working on a committee. There'll be a committee for that, and there'll be in input opportunities there. Uh, and we're talking about, um, you know, increasing our ability to get information to the communities and the HOAs. As Jonathan mentioned, um, if you're a homeowner, make sure your HOA knows this is a high priority for them to be working on from the HOA perspective. Um, because they're supposed to be working for you. Uh, and that's it. So thank you, guys, for coming in tonight. We appreciate it very much. And we'll keep keep this in front of us. We we all spent a lot of time to get here. We all spent significant um, money to have the opportunity to live here, and none of us want to see our houses go up in flames. So I'm sure that the, that we're all willing to take the next steps, just to protect our own homes.
Thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And again, thanks for, thanks for being being right here in town with us. We really appreciate it. And if there's anything we can be doing for your guys in the in the station, let us know. We're we're here to help.
Appreciate it.
Bye, guys.
All right. Uh, we're going to move on now to item three, which is discussion of Ross Creek and Community Reinvestment Area. Um,
Yeah, yeah.
Kyle Fielding, is Kyle on the phone? I think he's tied in. I saw him come in.
Yep, Kyle here.
Thank you. Do you, do you need to present? Do we need to set you up with anything? Or are you just going to talk?
No, I'll just talk a little bit and answer questions. If that's okay.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, so I was asked to uh, just provide a little bit of information on um, creating a community reinvestment agency, mostly in connection with the Ross Creek um, property and area. And uh, community reinvestment agencies, when I first started, I called myself a redevelopment lawyer because we called it redevelopment law. Then the terminology changed and it was um, community development and urban renewal. Um, it's changed a couple of times and now now it's called community reinvestment. And that includes some economic development tools and community development tools. And then also some blight removal tools, but that's not going to be all that relevant here for the Ross Creek. So so I'll focus a little on the economic and community development aspects. Um, so to take full advantage of what's available under Utah law for that kind of community development, community a- and economic development. Um, the the city or the town can create a community reinvestment agency. And the agency is a separate political subdivision. So um, the the, and and the agency is governed by a board that's made up of the same people that are always on the city council. So the city council members are always the governing board of the community reinvestment agency. And the boundaries of the agency are always the same as the city's boundaries. But it is a separate political subdivision. So if you're in town council meeting and you want to talk about community reinvestment agency stuff, you adjourn your town council meeting and you and you commence or convene a agency board meeting. Then the agency board can operate and take advantage of some of the tools that are available under state law. Um, two of the main benefits of a community reinvestment agency are the the ability to capture tax increment that can be used to uh, provide funding to to kind of act as a catalyst for the new development activity. And the second um, second main benefit is you get access to more flexibility when it comes to um, promoting new development or engaging in public-private partnerships. So there are some, there are some mechanisms that a community reinvestment agency can use and take advantage of that that the town can't do the same things. So um, the agency has a slightly different purpose and has slightly different powers under under Utah law. Gives you a little more flexibility. You can be more creative and you can provide some funding um, to help help provide that catalyst to growth. Um, a a community reinvestment agency is not a taxing entity. It has no taxing authority. So the only way it gets funding is by agreement with other taxing entities, including the city, county, districts, school districts. including the city, county districts, school districts, special service districts. Anyone that levies a tax on property, um, within a project area. So the, the agency can create project areas and then can capture tax increment or sales tax revenue um, that it can then use to, to, to use, use those funds to kind of, um, fuel development and do public, private partnership type stuff. Kind of a basic process for creating an agency. The town council adopts an ordinance to create the agency. We file a notice with the lieutenant governor's office. And then we record a notice with the county recorders. At that point, the agency is created. It's real quick and easy. Then we typically have the agency board adopt some bylaws to govern, to govern themselves and adopt an interlocal cooperation agreement with the town so that the agency can use the town's resources, personnel, office, administrative type stuff. Um, so, so pretty kind of foundational documents. You set up your agency. Then the agency has a few annual obligations. Um, every year the agency is to provide a report to the governor's office of economic opportunity. And if you have an active project area where you're collecting tax increment, you provide a report on that area. If you don't have any active areas, you just provide a report that says we have no active areas. So pretty quick and easy. The agency board will adopt an annual budget for the agency every year before June 30th. And they provide a copy of that budget to the taxing entities. And then the agency board is a public, um, political subdivision. So they need to do open and, and public meetings training once a year. And then, once you have an agency created, the agency can then create, uh, project areas. And that's specific areas within the boundaries of the city. Um, where you're going to focus on economic development or community development, whatever it is the agency's and the board's goals are. But, um, creating those areas allows for capturing tax increment, which is um, the increase in property tax revenue that results from new development activity, from new, new construction. So as property taxes go up, in the year you create the project area, you freeze the property taxes at this level. And then as things get built, the property taxes increase and everything in between, that's the tax increment. And, um, that can get passed along to the agency and the agency can then use that to pay for infrastructure, um, provide incentives to, um, developers or entrepreneurs or, um, fund public, private partnerships, purchase land, et cetera. There's a whole list of things the agency can do. And you can get creative because there's more flexibility. Now to capture tax increment, which is kind of the fuel that, that powers all this, um, you have to, you have to go to each taxing entity and ask them for permission to use their tax increment. And you do that by interlocal cooperation agreement. And that's totally just a discussion and negotiation with each taxing entity. So you can't force it on anyone. Um, but if you have, if you have that opportunity to enter into an agreement with the taxing entities, um, it can provide some, some revenue that can be used to, you know, whatever, whatever the agency's goals are in that project area, that can help finance those. That's kind of the big picture. Um, I know that's a lot, but let me know where you have questions and I'm going to, I'm going to answer questions at this point.
Can you, can you give us an example or two of some, uh, CRA areas around, uh, Salt Lake and vicinity that have been successful in this space?
Uh, yeah, um, there's, there's a lot. So I've done a lot of projects all up and down I-15 in the Wasatch front. And I've done a lot in rural areas as well. So right around Sandy City Hall, the Hell Center Theater, the Mountain America Credit Union Office Building. That was a public, private partnership that, that I and others, me and others at the Sandy City Hall spent years working on together. And we worked with, with Gardner Development on that and came up with a public, private partnership with shared parking. And, um, that, a lot of that was fueled by, by tax increment from that project area. Another example, maybe one more relevant for hideout. Let me think about that for a minute.
And Phil, uh, while, while he's, while Kyle, you're thinking, um, you know, a couple of comments. One is both Heber and Salt Lake City have CRAs. Um, you can go right to their sites. I pulled their, their agency plan down. I thought, um, Salt Lake did some interesting things with it. Kyle, maybe you were involved with that. One was, I think, back years, a number of years ago, the ballpark got started that way. And there, there were some, uh, people trails that got started and, and Heber's using it potentially for their downtown redevelopment. So those were two examples that I, I saw that I thought were, you know, at least somewhat useful. And, and just to back up, you know, we invited Kyle to the, our, our EDC on Monday. And, uh, on the guys that we'd like to learn more about this vehicle as a, as an investment, potentially for like what Kyle just mentioned, infrastructure for Ross Creek. So we could do some, you know, uh, co-development kinds of infrastructure that would support our aims and goals and, and that, in that area as well. So, um, that gives you a couple of seconds to think about some more examples and, um, Kyle.
Yeah, I've done, I've done some mixed use projects in various cities. Um, there's one in Woods Cross that, that comes to mind that was really successful in kind of revitalizing and revamping a retail strip that had gone under and, um, I had another one, now, now it slipped my mind. So, um, up in, up in Brigham City, I know they've done some mixed use type stuff. I know that the mixed use was something that was high on the public survey that was, that was done by the town. So there have been quite a few mixed use projects that have been successful and, and, uh, tax increment funding was kind of the catalyst for that, that made that happen. So lots of, lots of examples we could find.
So what, what's the incentive for the tax increment funding for the people who are giving up that tax increment? What, what, what's the value for them? We know what the value is for the community, but I don't know what the value is necessarily for those that are passing up their tax increment for some period of time.
Yeah, it's typically, um, kind of a but for argument that but for this public, uh, participation, either it's not going to happen this soon, or it's not going to happen to a certain level, or it may not happen at all. So without this catalyst, it may not start at all, or, or we won't get quite the vision we really want. And so, um, there, there are many, many success stories across the state of, you know, we used the tax increment and we're able to really, uh, exponentially multiply what got built there. And, and so, um, you know, ta, taxing entities are willing to participate because they know they're probably going to end up with more tax revenue at the end. So they give up a little now and they're not actually giving anything up. They're just, they're just delaying their collection of that increased revenue temporarily. And then at the end of the project area, once that tax increment stops, it's added to their tax base as new growth. So they do capture it in the end. Then the idea is by that point, you've created something bigger and better that has an even higher, uh, higher effect or bolstering effect on their tax base.
Okay. I guess that makes sense. Thank you.
And Kyle, we're not the only state, right? Where, I mean, it's not just Utah. The information I pulled out was, um, a number of our surrounding states, uh, are also have adopted this approach. Um, any comments on that?
Yeah, a lot of states have, um, a lot of states have. So I've seen some independent studies where one of the reasons Utah ranks so high, this isn't the only reason by any means, but one of the reasons Utah ranks so high in, in, uh, economic development and growth and continued prosperity is because these tools are available to, uh, kind of fill the gap where needed. So I know other states have them and, and some states use them more aggressively than Utah. Utah's approach is a little different where every act, taxing entity can opt in or opt out. For a lot of years, that wasn't the case. You could, there were, there were options where the town or city or county could force taxing entities to participate. And now with the opt-in, that's a little different, but, but yeah, a lot of, a lot of states have similar tools.
Okay. Polly, I see your hand up. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification to help the council, um, understand this. So, um, I'll ask them at a cluster. One is how long typically does the tax increment go for? And also can you define what that increment is? Is that generally from vacant land to then whatever is put on it? So, um, and then also what, uh, you were saying that different entities. So would it only be kind of the town's portion? Or does the state usually or a county usually also opt in? And then maybe you want to also just talk about, I don't know if you have experience, but there, I know there are numerous, um, funding mechanisms for private, public partnerships. So like, how does this compare to a bid, a PID? Or some of the other things that were passed recently and what are the pros and cons of each?
Yeah. How long do you have, Polly? Okay. So how long does the tax increment last? I think was the first question. Down by Utah Lake, there's, there's a town, little town called Vineyard that I'm sure some, all of you probably know by now. At one point Vineyard was, was very small. It had all this area that used to be the Geneva Steel Site. And, um, there were, there were parts where those concrete foundations went down 80 feet into the ground. And there were, um, literally millions of tons of dirt. It'd be hauled in and out. That project area, the tax increment funding in that area was set up to run for 40 years because that was a massive project. That's the, the longest one that I know. I've done quite a few that are in the 10 to 20 year range. Probably the most common is 15. But, um, as I mentioned now, it's all opt-in. So it's completely what can be, um, supported through some analysis on what's really needed and what do we expect to, to come here? And how much tax increment do we need? And then you kind of back into a year. And, you know, we've got some financial people on here. I think Eric Gibson from Better City. They actually do that type of stuff. I'm the lawyer that writes the agreements. So I'm, I'm not doing all that financial analysis. I just know about it. And so probably I'm not the best person to answer those questions, but, but in general, you know, somewhere between the 10 to 20 year range is typically where you're at. And then is how much increment? You can, you can go all the way up to a hundred percent of the increment, increment. So if you've got raw land and you add a building, you're pretty much going to be capturing nearly all that property tax. Cause it's all going to be, um, increment from the, from that new building. But again, it's negotiable. So if, if you want to strike a deal with the taxing entity committee and say, hey, you get half right from the beginning and we get half because that's what we think is necessary. And again, it comes down to the financial analysis of what's necessary to make this happen and get what we're trying to achieve. So typically that's a number that's backed into a little bit. And then, um, as far as the different entities that can, that participate, any entity that levies a tax within the town can participate. So the town itself can participate, the county, the school district, if you have any special service districts. I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar with hideout. So I don't know what special service districts are there off the top of my head.
We've got a water district, we've got a fire district, you know, yeah.
Okay. So, so they could participate if they want, if they want their portion of the tax increment. It's going to be really small relative to the county and the school district. The school districts is always the largest. They're, they're funded. You know, that, their portion of the certified tax rate is higher than anyone. So getting the school district participation is, is important. A lot of school districts don't want to participate if you're doing projects that result in more residential development because to them, they're just giving up tax revenue and taking on cost with new, new kids in the houses. So, um, that part of a mixed use project can be a challenge for school districts because they don't, they don't, they, they can come out behind if they're giving up their, uh, tax increment, but they're taking on the cost of having to, um, provide services for more kids that are now moving in. So that can be a, a sensitive and, um, careful discussion with the school district. Then I think you asked about, um, comparing tax increment to PIDs or other financing mechanisms. So the, the main difference is, um, creating a tax increment project area, it, it doesn't add anything to the certified tax rate. It's not like an additional tax levy. So the certified tax rate, um, isn't directly, is not directly affected. And so people in the project area aren't paying more in taxes like wood with a PID, you know? And in a PID, you're, you're creating this centralized or focused area and you're increasing the taxes of that specific area to pay for improvements in that area. Doesn't quite work like that with tax increment. Tax increment, um, doesn't have a direct effect on the project area. It's just that increase in revenue. It's not an actual tax levy. So, so it works a little different that way. Uh, the community at large kind of bears, bears the burden of that tax increment, but also gets the benefit of the increased taxes. So not entirely fair to call it a burden, but, but the price of that tax increment is kind of allocated across the whole community. I think that hit your questions, Polly. Was there another one?
I see Thomas, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just had a question, kind of a follow-up to what you just outlined. So if a CRA creates a project area, so you said the CRA has the boundary of the community, for example, but they can create project areas. If they create a project area and collect tax increment in that area, can they use it in other areas of town or does it have to stay in that defined geography, that project area?
Yeah. So generally the idea is wherever you collect from is where you spend the money. But you can spend outside of that if you can show a benefit to that project area. So if you've got some infrastructure that you need, you know, some offsite infrastructure that needs to be enhanced to serve this area, or if you've got some other improvement that needs to be made outside of that area and you can show a direct benefit to the project area, then, then you can kind of do both. So, so there's some flexibility.
Okay. Thanks.
And Kyle, um, in terms of the differences between a PID and, uh, a CRA, is it also, I think you addressed initially, but correct me, you know, provide some flavor here. The town, or the town council is responsible for managing the agency, the CRA versus PID not, not so? So can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, with a PID, you have a local, you have local representatives that run and manage the PID. With the CRA, um, the governing board, which is the city council members, they retain total control and, and, uh, manage it. So, so definitely it's more, it's more of a city level thing.
Thanks.
Eric Gibson, I know you got to be just, you know, chomping at the bit, wanting to correct or add to what I'm saying. So feel free if you want to, but.
No, it's really, really great. I would, the only thing I would add is just that, um, what's nice about tax increment financing is that if a project doesn't happen, then there really isn't an impact, uh, to it at all. And so that's kind of one of the benefits versus a PID where you're, you're definitely getting a tax increment over what you already had. And so the, the downside risks are, are a little bit lower for tax increment financing.
Yeah, there's really no risk. That's a great point. There's no risk with a tax increment project area. If there's no tax increment, if there's no growth, then nothing happens. No one's paying anything. It's just if there's growth and if there's a, an increase in tax revenue, then there's some money available.
Okay. Other questions from council on the CRA?
What does it cost, um, to, to, obviously it seems to me that you're, before you dive in and create one of these, you're better off, uh, reaching out to the local taxing bodies to see if you can get any buy-in. Assuming you get the buy-in, what, I mean, what does it take to set one of these things up in terms of fees and costs?
Yeah. So I guess two different questions there. Number one, how do you, how much does it cost and what does it take to set up the agency itself to create the agency? And that, I explained is a pretty simple process. It's an ordinance, filing a notice with the lieutenant governor, recording a notice with the county recorder and adopting some bylaws and a simple interlocal agreement with the city. That's typically a few thousand dollar cost. So fairly, fairly minimal when you look at the potential benefits. As far as creating project areas, the cost on that can vary, um, quite a bit depending on the size and scope and, and, um, and a lot, um, how much education. and a lot, um how much education and, and discussion and negotiation is required with the taxing entities, so. Total cost on those project area, uh on the project area creation, I don't, I don't generally handle a lot of that myself, but I've seen and Eric, is that something you guys do?
I apologize, I lost feed for a sec. Can you re- re-
Creating the project area and creating the project area plan and budget, is that something Better City does?
Yeah, yeah, that's something that we could certainly do. Um and a- as well as kind of doing the, the best use of the land analysis, understanding what the market is and, and can bear and trying to help build out what that pro forma might look like for, for the, the site itself.
So the question was, um how much does it take to create a project area? And I was explaining, it can vary a lot depending on the size and scope and discussions that are required with the taxing entities, et cetera. I, I've seen those projects or those costs come in anywhere between fifteen thousand to fifty thousand on the really complicated ones. I don't know if you have anything you want to add there, since you'd be the consultant that would do a lot of that.
Yeah, I think we, we just scope it out uh upfront, what, what that would take and, and would try to build it from there. Given that this is a ten-acre site, um I think that, that that's a reasonable estimate.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, thank you both gentlemen. Um another tool, I mean, we've got a number of tools that the state makes available to help us bring ideas forward around the Ross Creek area. And I think we've got to start to narrow down what it is we want to do there to the point where we can figure out how we leverage the various opportunities that are out there, whether it be CRA, uh public partner, public-private partnerships, et cetera, et cetera. Um so that we can make something happen there. But so it's nice to know that this is relatively easy to create. But again, we still haven't got to the point where we've got a, a vision for a, a a more developed vision for what we want to do at the, at the Ross Creek entrance. I mean, we have ideas, but we haven't got a partner with uh to sit down with and say, okay, we're going to build phase one, which is X. And we're going to try and do this, and now let's figure out how we're going to best fund it. So I think we've, you know, the EDC has been working hard on this, Ralph, and I appreciate that you guys have been working on this for quite some time. I think we've got to get to the point now where we, we want to state what it is that the end state is down there and what it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, we've come up with some of that, and that's what the Ross Creek Open House was for, also to get feedback with.
With my share, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But um you're right, nothing happens without, without financing. And so I see, I see Eric shaking his head. So yeah, money talks. And um you know, a piece of this is how to make uh you know, what are the avenues for, call it um, you know, PPP or uh you know, uh something where we're collaborating with an, with invest, with the right investor. I think we've identified a couple of those, and we've had some uh some folks who are closer to uh, you know, engaging with us on that basis. We've also, also been trying to look at the bigger picture, you know? Um one side of the bigger picture is, do we make, you know, do we find a way to create uh something that's beyond ten acres, because we have two parcels? And I know that, you know, that's in our thinking. Can we make this more appetizing to a larger developer that has um, you know, that really has deep pockets, that can execute um with us and, and that we have, that has higher degree of credibility in terms of ability to, you know, uh create something with us. And, and for the most part, it's what we've gotten so far, as you know, is uh the feedback we've had from like three hundred different folks who, you know, put their uh stamp on a survey have, you know, highly focused on the mixed-use development, le- less residential, uh mixed-use tying it to recreational and, and the lake. And so we want a developer that's also going to execute on what the town, you know, what the town wants and kind of the vision that we've crafted. Um we haven't run it, you know, we haven't uh, we haven't consummated on that piece of the deal. And that is frustrating, Phil. So um but we're also been in an, in an economic zone of high interest rates. Um you know, in, in, in a period of uh trepidation because of that and you know, not exactly a fully fleshed-out air, you know, uh concentration of homes that are going to support mixed use. So those are some of the downsides, but we're plugging away. And um you know, I think we, I think these kind of vehicles give us a better opportunity to create some collaboration. So that's, that's how I'd summarize this.
Thank you. Anything else for Kyle and Eric? From the council? If not, well, thank you, gentlemen, for joining us tonight. Thanks for the information. Excited to speak about how we leverage on one of these, how we leverage the thought process to help us move this thing forward. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
All right, item seven is the committee updates. Let's uh sneak through those, and I think we might actually make it out of here by eight o'clock. Could be a record. So um planning commission, and Thomas, you have number one and number two, so if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So uh the last planning commission uh meeting, we heard the um the concept plan for Elkhorn Springs, and so that was forwarded, so they'll be coming back with the uh, with the rezone request. They are tentatively scheduled for next week, but pursuant to some conversation uh conversations we had today, they may request an additional uh, some additional time and uh potentially come back the following month. We're also working with Wild Horses Development uh to get them in front of the planning commission. They're tentatively scheduled for next week. Um and uh those would be the only two. Ty Frisbee might be on for next week to go to the next stage of his concept plan review, or it may be the next meeting. Again, we're working with the, with all of them regarding materials, but likely it's Wild Horses uh at the next meeting, and then the following meeting would be um uh Elkhorn Springs. And design review committee, uh we don't have any new submittals um in the hopper for any design review. Uh I anticipate that'll change in April, May, but nothing as of now.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas. Ralph, you already talked a bit about EDC. I don't know if there's anything else you want to cover.
Yeah, I'd say let's move on. Um you got, you got most of my stuff and along with the fire as well.
All right. Chris on the postcommittee?
Uh yes, thanks, Mayor. The postcommittee met on February eighteenth. Um had our full agenda, so we have some follow-ups. We discussed it may be some of the easier uh things to accomplish. From one of the ideas that came out of the mid, committee was being able to put some bike route, bike route signage along uh specific roads within Hideout. We talked about um a share, possibly putting share rows in the road, which are those bike lane arrows, since we know our roads, our legacy roads are not wide enough to actually paint an actual bike line. So we're contemplating that. As some of you know, the National Ability Center Summit Challenge for the last few years has come right through Hideout. And we consider the uh path that, that event follows as um, as a potential bike route that we would want to make official. So we're going to talk more about that. Hopefully at the next meeting, we're going to have our uh engineer, if, if he's available, join us to have a discussion about that. Uh we also are trying to figure out funding on uh how to pay for what we call the spine trail. Pay for the engineering for that. So for anybody who's not familiar, we call it the spine trail, the future um separate paved bike trail that will get people from, people on, people on um bikes, e-bikes, baby carriages, runners, off of the highway uh and onto a combination of um separated bike lanes or um bike paths and um get them, get them off the highway. I'm going to call it, say the highway, I mean, two forty-eight, the high-speed highway that bisects Hideout. The other thing we need to um pick up now that winter will be ending is getting back to the current active project that's in Jordanell State Park. So we'll be uh discussing with the Jordanate, Jordanell State Park and um a- about upcoming spring trail work, um including you know, a continuation of the project that we already have funded through grant money. And so um the other thing that intersects with parks, open space and trails is wildlife. So we also had a conversation to continue wildlife corridor protections that we would like to uh somehow get those ref- reflected into future development agreements, but you know, uh we talked about a lot of things. Uh we are uh going to be uh moving from talking to doing, once the weather gets warmer and more spring and summer-like, then we will be launching into, you know, some um shovel-ready projects.
Okay. Questions for Chris? All right, well, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And Carol, any updates on transportation? I do see the park and ride being used a lot more heavily now that ski season is on.
Right. Um I did attend the um Wasatch County General Plan Workshop this past Tuesday. And they had, much like we did for the Ross Creek area, they had little boards with stickers and things that people could um you know, indicate that they were interested in. The interesting thing is, the Wasatch County General Plan does not include any of the incorporated areas. So it doesn't include Heber, it doesn't include Hideout, it doesn't include Midway Daniels. Um if they're incorporated, um we can't really ask for anything, but we can ask for adjacent property. So one of the things that um that I wrote notes for was trying to get more transportation along two forty-eight that would you know, work with the communities such as, you know, Deer Mountain, Deer Vista, whatever, how would that work? And then also to coordinate the trails. So um that was interesting because the trails some of the trails are not within the city limits. So there is a survey online, it's wasatchcounty.org general plan survey. So if people are interested, you can go in and just put ideas. But again, it won't qualify within the town limits. It would just be adjacent areas. So any questions? Okay.
Uh Carol, a question, maybe you could do, maybe this can be a future follow-up. So those of us who, you know, think of Richardson Flat in the, in the winter, that parking lot as a future place to park and then hop on a bus and go into town or go skiing. We know that the current buses, and they were expanded this year, there would be direct bus to Park City Mountain Resorts Base and a direct bus to Deer Valley's base. So those of us who use the Canyon's base area don't have that same option currently. Um I'm hoping that, you know, because of the new parking structure that's going to be started on Monday at the Canyon's base area and therefore limited parking, and then all the potential chaos that could ensue for next season, I am hoping that there may be a direct bus to that base area as well. Could you keep tabs on that for us, just to find out if there's any discussions that might be um including that? The reason I, I, I ask is I, I'm not entirely sure how successful the buses going straight to each of the two base areas, Park City and Deer Valley, have been. I'm hoping that they've been successful enough for them to to return again for next year. And then, like I said, you know, the, the difficulties of getting to the third base area that we have. And uh I'm wondering if those are going to be addressed through, you know, various park and ride options, including Richardson Flat.
Right, and and just, you know, as another comment, um Deer Valley is going to be closing down a lot of their parking areas. And so what they intend to do is move the transportation and the parking over to East Village. So right now, there's no bus that goes to East Village. So you know, besides canyons, you know, maybe we should start looking at something for East Village.
Yeah, that, great point. I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Right. So you know, I will try to follow it. Usually what they do is they wait till the end of the ski season, then they do an assessment as to how successful it was. And I do think it's been very successful. So um I really do think they'll continue it, but you know, maybe we should look at a bus to canyons and a bus to East Village. So.
I think that makes good sense, Carol, on the East Village side, because uh as someone who is married to a Deer Valley employee, what they're being told is the East Village is going to be where all the cars are going to be sent.
Right, exactly.
There's not going to be enough parking. If you take the seventeen, eighteen hundred cars that are parked at Snow Park and moved to East Village, and there's going to have to be a bus. Because they're going to get crushed.
Yep. So anyhow, so I'll keep following what's happening, but as I said, I really don't anticipate anything until after the ski season.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh we do not have a need for a closed executive session tonight. The best of my knowledge. Polly, do you see it any, any other way?
Nope, that's correct.
All right. So I think we're at the end of our agenda. So if the council would like to um close the meeting and, and call it a night, I would need a motion to end the meeting.
I still move.
Thank you, Carol.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jonathan. Bob?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph? Ralph, you okay to close?
Oh, all right, I still was unmuted there. Yeah, I'm before eight PM, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Hey, Jonathan?
Enthusiastic, yes.
All right, and Carol?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it very much and wish you all a good night.
All right.